We're going to have two microphones out on the floor. And where are those? Okay, the staff have them right in the back. So what we're going to do is I'll be responsible for selecting the person that will be making... I'll call on you if I point to you. You'll be asking your questions. You'll have two minutes. There is a timer. Staff will have a timer. So please follow me if I ask wrap up your questions so that we can get to it. I'll restate the question because we are on live feed. So we want to make sure that people that are listening to us via Facebook and the live feed can hear the question that you've posed. And then for those of you who have questions but perhaps may not feel comfortable speaking out loud, there is an agenda in your seat and there's room in the agenda for you to write your question. And then there's boxes in the entrance where you can deposit the question and then the congressman will ensure that he responds to your questions. So if you're feeling a little shy today but you have a burning question, feel free to write it down. But before we begin to do that, I'd like to just pass it on to you, Jimmy, before you say a few words.
Of course. Thank you, Erica. I appreciate you being here back in the town that you grew up. You and your family. It's always good to have a local person here being here sitting beside me. So I appreciate that. And but also thank you for everything that you do, obviously with the Palm River Valley prevention, but also on the Board of Trustees. Hartnell, I can tell you as someone who went to a junior college, excuse me, they called them junior colleges when I went there. Now they're called community colleges. I think I'll always call them JuCo, so I'm sorry. When I went to MPC, Monterey Peninsula College, I knew how important it was for me. And I can, I am dead honest, sitting here and saying that I would not be here if it wasn't for the opportunity that MPC gave me. Myself, my two older brothers did the same thing. They went to MPC and kind of got straight and went on to Berkeley. And as you heard, I went to UC Davis after my two years able to work full time. And then back then, you could do this, paid for my way through UC Davis, thank goodness. But I know how important it is to the young men and women here on the Central Coast to have strong community colleges. And especially in Salinas, I happen to say, I know Cabrillo does a hell of a job here, but in Salinas, we have a, there, I've been to Hartnell a number of times in my capacity as congressman, mainly to meet with the over 800 Dreamers that they have at Hartnell College and just to kind of give them updates and provide them with hopefully some hope and some security as to what's going on federally. But I know they're there like most students there because they want to, they don't just want to stay here, they want to contribute here. And that's how I look at kids and adults who go to community college. So thank you for what you do. Thank you for what Hartnell does. We were Dr. Llewellyn, the president of Hartnell last night, and it's honored to have you here tonight. Let me also take this time to thank and recognize a few other people who contribute great things to not just this community in Watsonville, but to the Central Coast. Obviously, I can't thank enough, and I always love saying "the mayor." I love seeing you. That's great. Because, I mean, talk about consistency. Have you ever seen this guy have a bad attitude? Yes. He's so consistent in your personality.
Talk to the first lady.
We do know what goes on behind closed doors. That's okay. But just let me say thank you for not only your professionalism, what you give to this community, but obviously your personality and who you are. Thank you. Let me also recognize Supervisor Gray Cap. Thank you for everything that you're doing, continue to do. Obviously, I know you have to go to church tonight. I appreciate that. But I appreciate, excuse me, oh, that's a reminder, please turn off all the...
Turn off the cell phones. That was only a reminder.
But thank you for being here especially. I appreciate that. And who just walked in, Nancy Pelosi. Appreciate everything that you do for the councilwoman. Thank you. And going on, Aurelio Gonzalez, another city council person from Watsonville. Aurelio, thank you again. And Letitia Mendoza, Cabrillo College Board of Trustees. Thanks for everything that you do. I know I met with the Dreamers and your veterans in the same day up there at Cabrillo College. And so thank you for that. And thanks to all of you for being here. Look, I know it's a summer night in the middle of the week, you know, almost six o'clock, you could be doing a lot of other things, but you're here. And that says a lot about you. It says a lot about this community. But I want to just start off with a statistic that I heard yesterday back on the radio. And what it said was that more people who were eligible to vote did not vote. More people who were eligible to vote and did not vote, there were more people who were eligible to vote than did not vote than there were people who actually voted. Let me say that again. There were more people who were eligible to vote and did not vote than people who actually voted. And to me, that's a shame, but I think it's very telling as to the predicament that we are in right now. And I just hope that we have learned our lesson. And that lesson is that there are consequences of elections. There are consequences when we do not vote. There are consequences when we do not participate in this process that we call our democracy. If we are a democracy, we the people. And therefore, guess what? It's left up to we the people to determine not just our fate, but our future. And I believe that we can do that coming up. I know that there has been a tremendous outpouring from a number of groups, not just here on the Central Coast, but throughout the country. And I do believe that we are seeing the results of that outpouring. The results of that motivation to get involved across this country when we were watching certain elections that are happening last night, last week, and so on. And I think we'll continue to see that. And to me, that's what tonight is about. To make sure that not only are we participating, that you get enough information to make an educated vote, however you vote. And this is part of that process. And so you've heard enough about me. My job here tonight is to hear from you as well. And so let's start that. And just let me continue to say thank you and thank you, Erica.
Captain Councilmember Alipe Aroneta is just...
Who is? Hey, Alipe, how are you? Another, if I may say so, a Bronze Star winner, Bronze Star recipient for his service in the Army. But thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so anyone want to kick us off? Does anybody have a question they would like to pose to Congressman Panetta? Right here. If you could please stand when I point to you, and I might just describe what you're wearing in case you're looking around. Who are you talking to?
Okay. Hello, Congressman Panetta. Thank you for having us here this evening. Thanks for all your hard work. I am, my name's Rosanna Bourne and I represent Save Our Skies Santa Cruz. I'm on the steering committee. As you know, we, there are thousands of residents of the county of Santa Cruz that have filed over 3 million complaints about jet noise in our community. And as you know, the FAA had promised that the Big Sur overlay was going to be moved and effective in the month of August this month, this year. And we don't have any information on that. The FAA has been very difficult to work with and get information out of. And in fact, the only way that they will talk to their community is through you and also through a roundtable. And I'm here this evening to ask if you would please support Santa Cruz County joining the South Bay Roundtable for Arrivals so that we can have access to the FAA and have better communication with them about the jet noise that we're facing.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that question and completely understandable question considering everything that not just you, but many residents have been putting up with ever since the FAA implemented the next-gen air route change. I've, you know, I live down in, across the bay, have actually heard that as well. I live up in the Los Tauris area that you've probably heard and talked to people who deal with that. And you actually can hear the planes, you know, for lack of better words, downshift when they're putting on their air brakes. But let me tell you, what I go through is nothing, nothing compared to which the hundreds, maybe thousands of people have been going through for the past few years now. As a candidate, I knew this as an issue that needed to be addressed. We were fortunate to have leadership like we did with Stanford for a number of reasons, especially on this. We were fortunate that we continue to have leadership from Anna Eshoo, Jackie Spear, congressional members that I am now working with to push the FAA to do the right thing. You are correct. I will be the first to tell you, the FAA is, like most bureaucracies, we talked about the Army Corps of Engineers in a little bit, but most bureaucracies can be miserable to deal with. As I learned growing up though, when I was from the representative that was in this seat that had a similar nose the size of mine, that you do not give up. You have to keep banging away. And what the people of Santa Cruz have done here, and they've moved over into Santa Clara County as well, and Carmel Valley, they haven't given up. And I would ask that you don't give up because I'm not going to give up. And I'm going to continue to push that. I'm going to continue to work with Anna and Jackie to make sure they do their job and live up to that promise. But as you know, bureaucracies are not afraid to break promises unfortunately, but it's up to us to hold them accountable. Let me just read what their, the recent response that they gave us in regards to that question of whether or not they are going to put the overlay in place. And it started off by saying what they were, how they responded to this. From Ian Greger, the Communications Manager at FAA Pacific Division. And he said that, and let me quote, "The FAA's redesign of the Class B airspace around San Francisco International Airport will take effect tomorrow, August 16th." That's just the Class B airspace. You know, that's different. That's different. "As we previously explained, the purpose of the redesign is to ensure SFO arrival and departure procedures are safely contained within the highly controlled Class B airspace. The redesign does not change existing flight paths and it is not related to the development of any new arrival or departure procedures." The second paragraph. "An FAA full working group met in May to consider the map, the notional design of the new optimized profile descent arrival route that would overlay the flight track of the Big Sur conventional route. The group identified several challenges, especially when considering the select committee's nine sub-recommendations. Period. The FAA will work to find acceptable solutions to the challenges and expects to provide an update soon to area congressional offices about its efforts." Now, I'm not happy with this. I know you're not happy with this. And that's why today Anna Eshoo and myself sent a letter to the FAA director telling him about our discontent with this response. And that's what we will continue to do. But as this process has evolved and as you've seen it, and I'm so thankful for as it has evolved, because of people like you, participants like you, who were part of getting, pushing so hard that they got that select committee. And that is why I do recommend that cities and counties be involved with that future roundtable that is going to happen, dealing with all of the cities in the trap, hopefully soon. And so I believe that that participation is very important because we saw how important participation is previously, and it has to continue. But also know that I am here to not work with you, but work for you and taking my disc right to the FAA and making sure that they do their job and do the job for the people in this area.
Thank you, Rosanna, for your question. Yes, right here on the corner, if you get a mic to him, please stand.
Hello, Brian Ashton, I'm in Scotts Valley. And I just want to keep banging away at this FAA thing. I'm on the same subject. Don't need to go into details, but I, noisy jets. So I just drove over an hour in bumper to bumper traffic to get here just to make an impression to keep banging away at this issue and let you know how bad it is. It's over four years now. It's ruining some people's lives. You hear some real death stories go on and on. But I live in a neighborhood, it was once peaceful country neighborhood, and yesterday I logged a plane every minute and a quarter for about an hour. And then they space out a little and then they come after you. So if you look to the right, you see one coming. You see the left, look to the left, you see one going. And some of them aren't as noisy and others are really jamming on their, dropping their gears like you were saying with the air brakes. They can be as low as 9,000 feet. Every so often, you'll get the exceptional 5,000-foot elevation jumbo jet that will really rattle your windows. In fact, even my mom, who has a drastic hearing problem, recognized it once at midnight. She woke up in the morning and said, "What was that sound?" And that's the big Korean, the triple seven that lies over in the very notorious. Anyway, it's pretty horrible. Just seems like there was a lot of spins from San Lorenzo Valley, Montegoon area that I kind of feel took this off track a little and we lost Bruce McPherson in the process. So he started taking sides with people outside of the jet line. And there were some pilots and politicians and very well-organized people in San Lorenzo Valley that didn't want the Big Sur route back. And I'm a contractor. I've worked up in those areas a lot.
Brian, is there a question? Thank you for your comments. Is there a question you'd like to ask Mr. Panetta?
Well, I think he's answering. I just want to keep banging away. But what I wanted to say was that nobody ever complained about Big Sur route before. And so going back to it, they spun up the story that we don't want it back. And I think they de-riding this process.
Well, I, yeah, I wouldn't say they de-riding it. I just know that they have concerns as well. And I met with Supervisor McPherson and other city leaders in Santa Cruz. We'll continue to have these types of discussions. But I can't stress enough how much, one, I appreciate you being here, contending with the traffic like I'm sure many of you did, and I appreciate that. But also just coming here to have a follow-up statement about that. But that is important. And I'm going to ask that you continue to speak out. I will continue to listen. I will continue to hear you because when I do, that motivates me. And so I hope that we continue to have conversations because, let me tell you, I mean, from the commerce, many conversations that I've had, not just with political leaders, but people like you, when it came to the FAA reauthorization, I was able to offer up an amendment that was accepted based on our relationship with the Republican chairman in Shuster, that basically said that, look, if there ever is any sort of implementation of or change of an air route, you can't just do computer testing. You actually have to get out there and do actual air testing. And that's what they have to do now. Now, that being said, Anna and I actually talked about it. Even though I got my amendment into law, into the FAA, I actually voted against the FAA reauthorization. Why? Because I did want to send a message. And Anna did the same thing. That they have still not complied. They still haven't heard us. They still have yet to act on this important issue. And so I voted actually against it. Now, it passed, but I wanted to send a message because I know that's what you've been doing and know that I hear you, not only in what I do here on the ground in the district, but also what I'm doing back in Washington, DC.
Let me, Jenny? Please stand.
I can see you.
Jenny Sambiente here. My question is that, well, actually, I'll start a little bit with a comment. Last year, when the administration started to target DACA students in the Salvadoran community, my brother and I had a conversation and he said, "I wouldn't be surprised if they started coming for naturalized citizens, immigrants who have been here since they were children and their residents, citizens now, and they've been part of this community for many years." I thought he was exaggerating. It was ridiculous. It was really out there. But now, what I'm hearing, there's definitely a possibility that this could also become a reality because we thought that DACA was safe and it's not safe. So in an essence, nobody really is safe, whether you're a citizen, whether you've been paying taxes, you're a model citizen and contributed in this country. What is your take on this and how can we make sure that this doesn't happen?
No, and a completely understandable concern considering that the rhetoric from this administration, I should say the anti-rhetoric from this administration didn't just start on January 21st, 2017. It started back in June of 2015 when the president made his announcement. And so obviously with that attitude that has persisted through the campaign, through the 17 months that we've had this administration, that is an understandable worry. Okay? I have not, being that it is understandable, however, I have not heard of any affirmative steps that are going to come about targeting legal immigrants. That being said, with this administration, we have to be vigilant. And we will continue to do that in Congress with, as a freshman and a minority member. That is what I continue, despite that, that's what I continue to do. Be it talking about comprehensive immigration reform, be it putting forward legislation, co-sponsoring legislation, being the original co-sponsor of the Blue Card bill that focuses on immigrants who have worked in agriculture, who will continue to stay in agriculture and provide them with a pathway. And then with that announcement by the president to target DACA students, Deferred Action on Childhood Arrival students who have come here, who I've met with, and basically to terminate that program immediately in the caucus, one of the caucuses that I'm on, I got together with Democrats and Republicans, and we put forward principles that were followed in the Senate in putting forward their four bills that unfortunately failed. So I could go on and on about the steps that Congress has been taking in order to prevent not only the termination of the DACA program, prevent the deportation of our Dreamers. But I think what it comes down to at this point, we are very fortunate that we live in the system that we do. Not only because of the obvious, as I mentioned earlier, that come voting time, we need to hold this administration accountable for these policies, but I do believe that we have a system of checks and balances. And we're seeing that system flex its muscles like it hasn't in a long time. And right now, in regards to using the Deferred Action on Childhood Arrivals, the DACA program, basically, that is secure at this point because our federal courts, especially here in the Ninth Circuit, has actually stopped any further removals of DACA, or any DACA, any removal of any DACA students and basically continued that program for existing DACA students. There was a court in Washington, DC that basically said about, almost three months ago now, it's coming up on it, that said, "Look, the administration, you have not put forward any evidence as to why you want to terminate this program. Therefore, you need to do that within 90 days, and if you don't, then new DACA students can start to apply for the program." And so we are fortunate that we do have our system of checks and balances because I think our courts have been pushing that. But I can't stress enough, though, that when it comes to immigration and anti-immigration rhetoric, we will continue to hear, okay? But we have to continue to stand up to it. We will do that in Congress. I am working not just with Democrats and Republicans, but Republicans to do that. There are those members that on the majority side that are willing to do that. And we need to continue to do that. In order for them to do it, we need to make sure their constituency pushes them to do that as well. And that's getting our message out there. And we can do that verbally, we can do that by marching, but obviously it really comes back to the best way we do that is by marching right to the voting booth. Can't stress that enough.
Thank you. Thank you, Congressman, for that. That's been a very, a very disheartening situation for a lot of the, obviously, community members in the entire Central Coast. You mentioned Hartnell, but Cabrillo, we also have a lot of DACA students in our own local school district here. We also have students. Just to follow up on Jenny's question, and you talked about some of the things that we can do, march and write letters to the editor and so forth, but we know, we know that the power of shifting attitudes often reside outside of our own local congressman who we know stands with us. What can we do to influence those individuals who may not quite understand the impact of this?
Yeah. Look, I think you've seen, I think there are many, there's groups here tonight, representation of certain groups, that understand that our voice needs to be heard, heard just beyond the Central Coast. You know, look, one of the highlights of this job is that not only do I get to learn and continue learning about and serving the people of this district in this district, but I get to learn about other districts, not just throughout California, but throughout this country. And to hear about the diversity of not just California, but numerous districts throughout this country. And in my work, and that's actually come from my actual work on this DACA issue as part of the Problem Solvers Caucus, being the lead, the lead Democratic push, as part of the lead of the Democratic Task Force, the Immigration Task Force from the Problem Solvers, there are things where I talk to Republicans about their districts. And what you've got to realize is that we're in a bubble here, thank God. Thank God. We're so lucky and so fortunate to be in this area for a number of reasons. But there are other districts throughout this country that just aren't as lucky. I mean, you don't understand that four fifths of Republican districts have a below-average number of immigrants in their district. So although at the grand sum of immigrants, as many of you and your family members who came here because of immigration, there are a number of other areas who don't appreciate it as much as us. And so it's not a priority for them. And so in Congress, I can do that by continuing to talk to them, explaining how important, how enriching it is to have immigrants in our community and what they contribute to our community, how they are, they're literally the cornerstone, I believe, to many communities on the Central Coast, but obviously our country. And at the same time, it is up to certain groups to get out to other districts and to let those voters understand how important it is and whether or not their representative are having the same type of discussions that your representative is. And that's very important and that needs to continue to be done. Reach out to them if you have family members, if you have friends in other districts, not just in the Central Valley, down south, but throughout this country. Let them know how important it is, how basically what it has done, what it has contributed to our community here and how it can affect other communities as long as we have representatives who are willing to stand up for people who are willing to take the risk to come here in order to get your children a better life. It's very important. Let me just also follow up on a thing that you were part of a couple weeks ago and that you started, did a family separation press conference with a bunch of mothers who were so concerned about the border, the issues of the zero tolerance policy and the separation of families, members that are going on. Look, once again, legislatively, I put forward a bill with five other congress members, the Keep Families Together Act, so that we can keep our families who are coming here fleeing violence, keep on approaching the border and keeping them together. But once again, in this majority Congress, we're not seeing that advance. But once again, what happened? Our courts stepped up. And so you have 2,500 children who are separated from their families total at this point because of the decision by our federal courts, Judge Sabra down south in particular, 2,000 of that 2,500 have been resumified. Now, there's 500 remaining and there's a number of issues as to why they haven't been resumified, but fortunately, that hasn't satisfied this judge. And she's continuing to push on this administration, which is very important. Let me also address another issue that you brought up, and that's the El Salvador community. And that there is this program called Temporary Protected Status, TPS Status. As you know, we have a large El Salvadoran community here on the Central Coast, here in Moscow in particular.
I understand.
That's right. But you have to understand that that TPS status, another policy of this administration, is determined. Now, they were granted TPS status because of a major earthquake, I think back in 2001 in El Salvador. And a number of people came here. And the reason why they weren't allowed, they didn't want to go back because of the situation down on the ground there in El Salvador. But we allowed them to stay here because they're getting temporary protected status to stay here because of the conditions down there. They've been allowed to stay here because of that temporary protected status. They have to reapply every 18 months. And so they will continue to stay here. This president has said that not only people from El Salvador, but Honduras, Nicaragua, a couple other countries, Ecuador, Haiti, those TPS, that TPS, they're going to terminate. And as you know as well as I do, those people, they have become, people who've come here down from El Salvador, they're part of our community. We have family, they have friends, they contribute to our economy, our community, they have jobs. I mean, they are part of it. And so this is why myself and Mike Hoffman, a Republican from Colorado, have... And so this is why myself and Mike Hoffman, a Republican from Colorado, has actually, and he's actually been one of these, one of these Republicans who basically understands how important immigration is, I have to say. We're putting, we're working on putting together a TPS caucus because we don't want this issue to get forgotten. There are a lot of immigration issues, like we just talked about most of this time here. But I think it's important to talk about it, and TPS is something that we cannot forget, and that we have to keep pushing that issue as well. So I just wanted to mention that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for answering my question. We'll go with Lupe, and I'm going to start spreading this way and then I'll go back this way. Okay? Lupe, right.
Hello, Lupi Libas. And I'm wondering, well, first of all, I'd like to say that a lot of us live here in this beautiful area because we love the weather, we know everything about it, but some people cannot afford to live here. And I was wondering if there anything at your level that is being there to help us be able to build affordable housing, to be able to promote better living styles for some of our families? We have a lot of immigrant families here, a lot of farm laborers, but they can't afford to stay here. And so, and a lot of people that just work here that can't afford to stay here. I'm just wondering what's happening at your level to encourage or to help us to be able to solve that problem of affordable housing?
Yeah, no, Lupe, thank you for that question. An issue, an issue that is not just pressing here in Watsonville, in Santa Cruz County, but in Monterey County, in San Bernardino County, in Santa Clara County, beyond the Central Coast, all of California, it is a very difficult issue that is slowly starting to be addressed. And fortunately, I can say this, it's starting to be addressed at all levels. Now, obviously, housing, as many of you know, is, that's kind of a local and state issue, but there are a number of things that are being done at the federal level that I can tell you about. The first thing, obviously, is certain grants that the federal government can provide to the states, to the counties, in order for them to build and develop low-to-moderate-income housing. And I had my staff put this together for me today, because I didn't know the number. I knew we've been working on it, but I wanted to know the numbers of how much has come in through these grants. I want to share these with you, just in my term, what we've been pushing for, just in my term. So the Community Development Block Grants, which provides training programs and services for low-to-moderate income, 9.5 million has come into the Central Coast. The Home Grant, which focuses on building, rehabilitation, and ownership opportunities for affordable housing, 2.1 million just in the past 19 months. Obviously, we continue to have HUD-BASH programs that helps out our veterans. I saw that as a board member of the Veterans Transition Center. That was invaluable to our veterans who want to live here. FEMA has provided grants through Combating Homeless and Hunger, 500,000. The Emergency Solutions Grants, 600,000. Continuum of Care, basically, that's a homeless grant program provided to nonprofits and housing authorities, 4.5 million. So that money has been coming in, but we have to continue pushing for that. Put it this way, the Trump administration, when they first came out with their budget, they wanted to cut all of those programs significantly. But I have to tell you, the House and the Senate programs, their numbers went up in the last ominous budget because of the concerns, like people like you have about affordable housing. Because affordable housing, the lack of, is not just central here, it's not just centered here on the Central Coast, it is throughout a lot of parts in our country, and we're here and we're listening to you, and that's why we have these programs. Now, there's a couple of other things. Obviously, there's tax credits. You know, the 9% tax credit that comes in from the federal government that is for development of new housing areas, but then also there's a 4% tax credit which goes to the rehabilitation so that low-to-income levels can live in these areas. And we've got to make sure that those tax credits continue to come into the state, who then disperses them down to the developers. And I'm quite proud to say that this year in our budget, we actually upped the number of 9% tax credits, that is, tax credits that go to new building, new building for loan from housing, by 12.5%. So we continue to watch out for that as well, that's important. And then, obviously, with farm workers, I am looking into increasing loans by the USDA for developing farm worker housing here. And we're doing that by trying to expand the 524 and 516 Farm Worker Loan Program, so we've done that. But then we're also trying to come up with other legislation for people, because as we, no, no matter what level, I mean, I feel this way, no matter what level of income you have, it can be difficult to live on the Central Coast. I mean, there's a reason why we're so lucky to live here. It is a desired place to live, we get that. But what I'm hearing is people who are in middle to upper income, they're saying, "I can't afford my rent. I don't know what to do. I'm paying over a third of my rent to, that goes to housing." And so what a compadre of mine, colleague of mine, Scott Peters from San Diego, he came up with the Rent Relief Act. And what that does is says that if you are paying a third of your income to, that goes to your rental, that goes to your rent, you can then take a tax deduction, a federal tax deduction. Now, there's a kind of a formula that goes into play. If you have, if you have one, like I said, you have to pay a third of your rent, a third of your income to rent, it depends on what, how much annual income you have, and it depends on the fair market rate for rents in that area. And they look at that formula, and that determines what type of tax deduction you can take from your federal income taxes. Now, once again, I mean, this is something, I don't know where it's going to, maybe it won't go anywhere in the 150th Congress, but I can tell you that the dynamics change in Congress, this is exactly the type of bill that may pass if there's a new leadership in Congress. And that's one that I'll continue to carry, I'm a co-sponsor of this bill, because I think it's important for this area. And I think we've got to start thinking outside the box federally when it comes to, obviously, make sure that the grants are there, make sure that the tax credits are there, but also I'm glad to see that there's a legislation like this that I can support for people who live here on the Central Coast in all ways.
Thank you for your question. Gentlemen, right?
You may be aware that the county board supervisors have put Measure G and H on our ballot. Measure G, I believe, is the $140 million low-cost housing initiative. It also includes building the first mentally ill intake center in the city of Watsonville, and it also provides money for parks. And Measure H, I believe, is the 50 cent or half cent sales tax increase to provide continual funding. It would sunset in 12 years. So I'm wondering, do you have an opinion on either Measure G or H, because it's part of my campaign? I'm advocating the voters who support both of them, even though, yes, it does require they have to dig a little bit deeper in our pockets. But to be honest with you, we're not getting much from President Trump, and he clearly hates us. He makes that clear test on every nasty political statement he makes. So I'm hoping you will support Measure G and H as well and look into that, because it's getting worse. We've got people living under freely overpasses there. Behind me, in the raspberry fields behind my house on Blanca Avenue, I'm encountering them with their shopping carts everywhere, Congressman.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that comment, Steve. I, 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 look, I think we understand that homelessness is an issue, not just in Santa Cruz County, it's just Watsonville and Santa Cruz County, but you're seeing it in Monterey County and Salinas. It is a big issue, and that's why I think you're seeing this issue being addressed at all levels, be it at the city level. I just, two, I think a month or two ago, I was in Salinas in Chinatown, and I stood at the groundbreaking of an area that was going to develop a portable housing, a 90-unit portable housing structure, and we're standing in the shadow of a recently completed 150-unit apartment complex that was built for low-to-income, for low-to-moderate residents there, income residents there. I say that because this issue is an issue that needs to be addressed at all levels, be it through measures like you just mentioned, the GMH that you just mentioned, be it at the state level, be it at the federal level. I think it's very important, I think all of us here understand that. I, I'll be honest with you, I'm not going to take a position at this point, because this is the first I've heard of this. And so I'd be remiss if I just shouted out yes without actually studying the thing. I know better, and so I'd like to do that before I take any sort of position on this thing. But thank you for bringing it to my attention. This is exactly why I'm here, so I can hear about stuff like this. And thank you for your work.
Thank you, Steve. Right in the back, if you could please wait for the mic to get to you? Yes, you back there.
My name's Aiden Donley, and I'm from Santa Cruz. And it's just to follow up on the TPS issue in the Salvadoran community. I'm just curious to know, I know that Panetta has done work legislative-wise to introduce something and have it be extended, but will the courts be able to intervene? If it doesn't, is, I'm just curious to know.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Legally, I don't know personally and professionally, I hope, because it seems like, you know, you're kind of sensing a theme here. We are trying, we are taking that swing legislatively, because that's our job. But at this point, having a majority that is not willing to put these types of pieces forward, having an administration that is not encouraging these types of pieces of legislation, and actually, in fact, taking policy stances that are clearly against it, as I mentioned, it can be tough. And so we've had to rely on our courts to step up. I don't know if there's any legal challenges, I apologize for not having that information, but I wouldn't be surprised if there are organizations, be it ACLU or others, that actually put forward these petitions to stop any sort of removal of people who come here under TPS. I can only hope. So I apologize for not having that information.
Let's see, right here in the middle. Can tell I have a pattern. It's like a sprinkler going this way.
My name's Mary Bannister, and I'm here with Clint and Karen Miller, and we're a group, part of a group that is very concerned, continues to be concerned, and has been concerned for decades about the flooding along the Poporo River. In 1997 and 98, 20 years ago now, two lives were lost on the Poporo side. This is a low-income community, there's senior villages on the north side of the river, and after that flooding, the capacity of the river, we understand, was about 30,000 cubic feet per second. We believe now that that capacity is around 10,000. So we're staring in the face of another catastrophe for this community, and so we're very concerned about that. We appreciate tremendously all the work that the congressman's done to support the Corps of Engineers project, which is the big project that's been agonizing to watch get moved along at a snail's pace. But we're hopeful that our project gets done, and anything we can do to support the congressman's work, we're happy to do that and anxious to do that. But secondly, there's also currently debris in the middle of the river. We are frustrated to see Santa Cruz County rivers, Monterey County rivers get cleaned out, have the debris and vegetation get cleared out when the Poporo River somehow gets left behind. And that's an immediate concern for flooding this coming winter, should we have the kinds of storms that we're seeing right now. And a lot of us, old folks, remember the blue drums. There was a CNN tractor from the east side of Highway 1 that flowed through the bridge and went all the way to the coast. I mean, that's how tremendous these forces are. So anything we can do and anything the congressman can do to help with the permitting to get the river channel cleared, we appreciate that. And again, we're here to support the cause.
Thank you, Mary.
So I'm going to just, maybe just ask a question, because you didn't ask the question, but I'm going to ask the question. Is there anything that you can do to help with cleaning up the debris?
Yeah, no, exactly, exactly. Look, let me just start off by saying, it was 2000 and, I want to say, 14 or 15, where we had a meeting in this room, actually, I was just observing, but there was a meeting in this room amongst, obviously, a number of participants, Clint, you were there, and the Army Corps of Engineers was there as well. And I'll never forget the feeling that I had of just kind of going, and it was, I remember seeing the general that had probably come down, he'd come down from San Francisco, and was talking about it. And he basically, you know, his attitude was, at least it was, my impression was, "Well, I'm sorry, I've kind of done what I've had, but I have to leave, I'm getting reassigned now." And, 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 and the next guy will come in here and he'll listen to you as well, is what I remember thinking. And I just remember going, not on my watch, if I'm ever in the position to do something. And that's why it has been a priority for me. As Clint knows, as you know, as Nancy knows, this has been a priority. And it's a priority in the sense that I'm not going to let them get away. And like I said, it'd get away with not doing anything. Because I can tell you, if we let our foot off the gas, and I mean, if we let our, our foot off the throat of the Army Corps of Engineer, they would just run away. They'd be the first to stop doing this, okay? They're working hard, okay? But we have to continue to encourage them to do so. And that is why I have met with the major generals who have come in and left of the San Francisco branch that is in charge of the Poporo Project. Each one of them, numerous times, called them into my office in Washington DC and let them know that this is a priority, not for just me, but for the people of Watsonville. Very important. We continue to do that. It is why we have weekly staff meetings with the Army Corps. Every week, my staff calls the Army Corps staff and basically lets them know where we're at, because we want to know where they're at on this project. That's why we're able to get 100,000 for the director's report for the overall project. That's why I believe that the emergency repairs have started in that area as well. But I'm telling you, it's one of these projects where if we just let up a little bit, they would run the other way, okay? But we're not going to, and we're going to keep on it. And we've also got to continue, there's a bigger picture here, and it's the funding though, as well. Because we, I, I am confident that we're going to continue to work hard to get the project, but then we've got to start thinking about funding and where that's going to come from, is something to kind of think about as well. In, but we'll, we'll continue to do it, trust me, Mary. But I, I want to continue working with you, Clint, Nancy, everybody else who's involved, because that's what type of project this is. It is a collaborative project, and the county and state officials have done one hell of a job. And Clint, and all of you and the community members, you've done a great job making sure that your representatives don't take the foot off the throat of the Army Corps. And that's what I want to continue, that's my ask of you, is that we continue to work together on this, continue to collaborate on this, to make sure that the Army Corps of Engineers continues to do their job. In regards to the debris cleaning, now, if, you know well, that down in the Salinas Valley, you know how long it took to get the procedure going to clean that debris?
I'm just kind of like, let's go, let's go borrow some of Clint's equipment and go clean it up.
And, and trust me, you're not alone in that sentiment. However, they, we all know that there are certain regulations that are in place in order to protect the environment that is there at this point. And actually, people in Army County did a good job. It was difficult. It always is when you get diverse groups at a table. Trust me, I know, as in Washington DC. But even right here in this community, getting everybody to the table can be difficult, one, but then coming to an agreement and having that compromised is just hard. But that's what it's about. And I believe that that's what it needs, that's what needs to be done. We've been able to collaborate before in this community, but that's what needs to be done when it comes to clearing the debris. There needs to be people who can call that meeting and make sure you can sit down at the table and get everybody together and figure out something. It's not ideal, okay? I get it, but that's our system, and that's our process. And then when you get, say, by all sides, when everybody kind of has their hook in it, that, they kind of have skin in the game that way. And whatever agreement is on removing that debris, it's stronger, if you ask me, when you have everybody as a part of it. And that's, that's what I believe needs to be done, that that's going to happen.
Great call to action. We'll go to the gentleman here, and then I'll come, I'll come right back.
Thank you Congressman, my name is Barry Stoudamard of Naptos, and thank you for coming out to Naptos yesterday and for these series of town halls. And thank you too for being more than that average Congressman, if you remember what I was talking about. My question is about transportation and our rail line. I think for a lot of our working families especially, the most expensive thing after rent and housing has got to be transportation. Now, we, we own a rail line, we bought that rail line in 2012, and I want to tell everyone in this room, tomorrow, the Regional Transportation Commission will have a meeting in this building, on this floor, right next door, and they're going to talk about the Caltrans State Rail Plan that includes this rail line that's outside. I can't think of anything that would help people out more, other than the housing thing, than some, than some rail transit, some better, some improved transportation. When there's state money to pay for this and federal money, it's an FRA rail line, we have to, we have to keep our eye on the ball and do the best we can for public transportation solutions. And I, and I believe your dad was a big supporter of public transportation. I, so I hope people can come out to that meeting. My question is, it's two, two parts. My question is, it's two parts. What can be done that you know of from the Washington DC angle to support us in our quest for improved public transportation? Widening the highway, as unlikely and expensive as that is, is not public transportation. A bike trail, and we have a group that wants to tear out the tracks for a wider bike trail, that I don't think is gonna do anything at all for Watsonville compared to public transportation. What can DC do? What can you do in your position in Washington DC? And what can we do at home to make sure that the rail line is preserved and used for people?
Thank you, I appreciate that, Barry. Thank you for your participation in a number of events that I've been at and what you do. Look, I think, you know, who isn't against public transportation? I think we all understand the value of it, we understand how important it is. But, you know, with that, it obviously comes cox. And we'd love to see some infrastructure investment. Not only in, I mean, it's a long time due now that there needs to be infrastructure and investment from the federal level. You're seeing it at the local level. There was a reason why three out of the four counties that I represent passed measures to tax themselves to go to infrastructure. The one that didn't pass was San Bernardino. But guess what's on the ballot again in November? Another measure to do the same thing. And they're working hard to make sure that passes. At the state level, you have the gas tax, which is going to state infrastructure funding. And at the federal level, I wish, wholeheartedly, that the President started off with an infrastructure package. I really do. You heard me say this yesterday, and I'm gonna say it again, because I think that is something that not only is needed, I mean, I guess what they're saying is by 2020, it's going to be $1.6 trillion that's going to need it to go in investment in our infrastructure, our roadways, our rails, our air, our water systems, our water quality, a number of areas that need investment in and have been neglected, especially at the federal level. So obviously, it is needed, I can tell you amongst my colleagues, that's something we want to do. I'm part of this group called the Problem Solvers Caucus. It's what we worked on, we talked about earlier about the immigration issue. We talked about healthcare. We put something together when it came to infrastructure. The issue is, what is the pay for, as it always is when it comes to federal spending, okay? What's the pay for? And we haven't been able to figure that out. Now, I'd like to see some sort of infrastructure investment bank be created and that there's basically an input of about, you know, close to like $50 billion. So that's what's needed. And with that, you can leverage other monies from that, take out loans based on that, in order to get the investment that we need in our infrastructure, that's very important. Another idea, just kind of give you an idea of what's kind of thinking outside the boxes, there are corporate profits overseas that a lot of corporations didn't want to bring back into this country because of the tax on it. I think it was over 30%. And so they just had it kept overseas. Another idea by one of my colleagues, John Delaney, was, look, give them a one-time repatriation rate and put some of that money, have them take back some of it, but also use some of that in order to go towards infrastructure investment too. I think that'd be smart too, if we could do that, although the new tax reform package has kind of changed that, because it's allowed corporations to go ahead and repatriate at the lower rate without doing anything about that money unfortunately. But obviously, then you hear about public-private investment. In urban areas, I think that's great. I commend the people in private industry who are willing to do that. But I would also like to see the motivation to do public-private investment in rural areas like ours as well. And that's the worry. If you just rely on that kind of stick, you're not gonna see a lot of companies invest in the infrastructure, like broadband for instance, that's needed in our rural areas. And so it's the pay for that's the issue at the federal level. Like a number of things, to be frank. I'd like to see a little more leadership on the pay for aspect coming out of the administration. You are seeing it from congressional members. But this is an issue that's going to take everybody to be involved at all levels. And I appreciate your work at this level as well.
See, I'm gonna put the lady in the back. Thank you so much for your patience. I know you raised your hand from the very beginning. We'll take your question now.
Thank you.
And then I guess we're gonna have to put your camera down.
I am, because of the microphone, thank you. My name's Becky Steinbrenner, I live in rural Apthos. There've been a lot of questions this evening about immigration. So to transition to my topic, it is about the historic preservation of the Redmond Hirahara House here in the Pahrul Valley that has a rich story to tell about immigration and the effects of the executive order 9066 on the citizens, the Japanese-American citizens that under executive order were sent to concentration camps. This house was the home of the Hirahara family who had to go. And luckily, their neighbors put together the money to pay their taxes and keep the property. I think that's a rich story that needs to be kept alive in the Pahrul Valley. The Hirahara family brought back with them families from the concentration camps that were not so lucky, and many of them got their start again in the barn next to the house. Both of those structures are now in really sad disrepair. It's on county-owned, in the county zone area. It's owned by a private developer. And yet, nothing's being done to preserve this house, the Redmond Hirahara House, that is on the National Historic Registry. We would like your help in discussing this issue with the owners, the Tut family, to really help do something to preserve this rich cultural history of the Pahrul Valley. My second issue is regarding water rights for the San Lorenzo River and getting that changed to aid in being able to send water to other areas of the county, most notably the mid-county groundwater basin. Right now, there's water rights amendments that were applied for 12 years ago. And I've been told that it's a federal agency that's holding it up, Fish and Game. And we really need your help to amend that so that the Pahrul River, I'm sorry, the San Lorenzo River can begin sending some stormwater supplies to alleviate the critically overdrafted groundwater basin.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that Becky. Thank you for your very educated questions. So much so that, I'm sorry to say, there's a lot of things that I can't really speak to on these issues. You know, look, on the Hirahara, Hirahara family house and barn that were there, clearly, they represent more than just a house and a barn. They're symbols for the struggles that many families went through, especially Japanese when they were interred. But many families that went through that came here and basically worked hard despite some of the hurdles that were put in place in order to succeed here. And so I agree with you wholeheartedly. Obviously, there's a lot of hoops that you have to get through, especially that it's on private land. But this is something that I think maybe we should discuss. If you could come into my office and we could have a sit-down in this so I can get more information about it, because I do not know about this. And I think this is an interesting thing, but I'd like to learn more about it. Clearly, you are someone that I could learn more about it from. That goes with this water rights question. I'm not familiar with this issue, I'm sorry. But once again, hopefully at this same meeting, we can talk about that. And if there's any thing that we can do with Fish and Game in order for them to come to the table and talk about this, hopefully I can, we can collaborate on that in order to move forward.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And once again, let me just say something. But that's with anything, ladies and gentlemen, I think, many of you know that, I hope. I hope you know that. If you don't, I'm telling you this right now. What I feel is my priority in this job, are all you, are my constituents. Because what I've learned is that that's what affects people. That's how I can actually affect people. If I do my job, by serving you, by providing you with constituent services, by being that bridge from here to Washington DC and the bureaucracies that can be overwhelming, that's my job. That's my job. And I can tell you that that's been, I say that because of how I learned it. Because let me tell you, I still hear stories to this day about the service that was provided to people by our representatives. You know, just a couple of stories. I was at the Pahrul Valley Chamber of Commerce Dinner. And a month of it ago, comes up to me. And he pulled me aside and he said, Jimmy, I gotta tell you, back in the floods of 1980s, in the 80s, my farm was burnt out. And I didn't know what to do. So I contacted my Congressman's office. And three days later, I got a call from the Small Business Administration. And six months later, I got a loan from SBA. And he said, because of that phone call, look at me now, one of the biggest strawberry farmers in the Pahrul Valley. I was at the strawberry festival here in Watsonville. And this guy comes up to me and he says, Jimmy, I gotta tell you, your dad saved my marriage. And I was like, okay, all right, well, thank you. And I kind of, I'm walking away, like, I don't want to get into this. And when he was serious, he said, no, 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 look, I was, I had come here from Mexico and I was working in the fields, and I had my residency here. But I met my wife in the field, she was from Nicaragua. And she was on her way to be deported, we didn't know what to do. So we went to our Congressman's office. And I can tell you that because of that visit, we were able to allow her to stay here. We eventually got married, she eventually got her citizenship. Now, the funny thing is, he was on top of me, said, yeah, but she eventually left me. And literally, I kind of had the same reaction. And I, no, this is a true story, right out here in where the festival is, in the square there. I said, why did you tell me that story? And he said, that's not the point, that's not the point. The point is that when I needed something, I went to my Congressman's office and they helped me. That's how I've learned this job to be. So if you have any issues, be it for protecting a house that means so much to this community and to a culture, be it to immigration issue, veteran issues, not getting your benefits, if I can be that rich, that's why I'm here. Look, it was a lot of burden on my staff, which you've seen here, and they do a hell of a job. And we're continuing to learn this position. But they understand that's my priority, that you and serving you is my priority. And I hope to continue doing that. But the best thing you can tell me is that I contacted your office and I got a response. The worst thing you can tell me is I contacted your office and I didn't. But I want to hear that anyway. I want to hear that anyway, because they know that. We have actually, as you know, it's been a very active 19 months. A lot of people have reached out to our office. We've had over 200,000 contacts in our office. Calls, emails, walk-ins, you name it, over 200,000. Just let me give you an idea, back in Sam's last term, he only had 40,000. We have a response rate of about 95% to that 200,000, okay? And we're gonna continue that. But I want to continue to hear from you, and that if we don't respond, if we're not doing our job, let us know, let us know, because we will respond. Because to me, that's my job here, that's my number one. Don't worry, I understand fighting for what we stand for in the Central Coast. And I'm doing that with my voting record, I continue to do that in Washington DC. But trust me, I know that we can actually affect people's lives by helping you directly, you're on the ground, and that's what I continue to do. Thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you.
Jacob, before I get to you, Jacob, maybe just stand so that the microphone can make its way. It's really good to know that 200,000 requests have been made. And let me tell you how I interpret that. I interpret that to me that the community is awake, the community is engaged, and they're responding to what is happening. So whether it's a request for help or a complaint, because somehow you're gonna deliver that. It's really good to know that that many people from our neighboring communities are engaged.
It's true, and we want it to translate into votes.
At the end of the day, that's what matters.
And I don't meant for me, I meant for basically everybody in our country.
Correct. Jacob?
Jacob Martinez, Watsonville. And yes, that's true, I reached out to your office for help with my student's parents that was having immigration issues. The next day, I got an email back and all these resources, so it's true. So thank you for that.
Speaking of you, you talked to Taylor, who is here in our Santa Cruz office.
Taylor and Emmanuel as well, back there, work in our Santa Cruz office.
Just to let you, everybody know.
Right, they're fabulous. So speaking of you, we work with a lot of youth. We tell our youth to go to college, be successful. I'm a product of U C and CSU as well. But the right path of education, I think, is making that tougher and tougher to honestly tell the kids to go out to college, maybe, okay? So can you speak a little bit about what you, your office is doing and what's happening at the federal level to make college more affordable for our young people?
Thank you Jacob for asking that question. And I just informed our Congressman that my son started his senior year today. That's at the top of my mind at this moment in time, and I'm sure I'm not alone in that.
Yeah, look, you know, I hate to say this, but I don't, because of the work that I did and that's public service, I'm still paying off my student loans from my law school, okay? Because right after law school, I went in public service. As you heard, I went to the District Attorney's Office, unlike my wife, who went right to a private firm, but then eventually came over to the District Attorney's Office, and that's where we met, who's now a judge. She had to call for public service as well. She paid off her loans. But, you know, I have not, and I'm still paying it off. And she reminds me of that every time I write the check. But, look, it is, in your, like I said, back when I went to school though, I would have had, I'd be still paying off my undergraduate loans. But I was able to, you know, go to JC, work full-time and pay off UC Davis, because you could do it back then, it wasn't that expensive. I mean, I was talking to Dr. Lawell, and what did he say? He said, $1,200 would be the, would be...
For what?
At Hartnell.
Hartnell?
Yeah.
But just like Cabrillo, we're giving...
I was just gonna get to that, you took my line.
I'm sorry. You gave me that opening.
That's a part of it, Jacob, say it, please, can that be Cabrillo?
Cabrillo, M.C. Hartnell, because we know, because we know that access and cost are a factor for many of our students, all the JCs have launched a Promise program where if you're a first-time college goer, you don't get to pay anything for the first year at a community college. And so this is an opportunity not to be missed. And I'm saying this because I think if all of us go out to our neighbors and our friends and so forth and remind them that there is this opportunity to get some of those general education requirements out the door in the first year at no cost, whoa, that's how we advance academic success for our students, for sure.
Yeah, no, I think that's an excellent opportunity. So we're at Salinas Valley Promise is what it's called, and I'm glad to see...
Cabrillo Promise.
Cabrillo Promise, and M.C. has the Promise as well, it's wonderful. I love that the three community colleges in this district and the CD20 are doing that, it's outstanding. And that means a lot to me, obviously, as someone who went to a JC. But as you know, Jacob, and as we hear, as many of us understand that children are in colleges, in college, I don't yet, I will though, I type, 70% of students graduate college with student loans. Right now, the number that's out there, 1.3 trillion in debt. It's the second highest form of debt behind home mortgages. You have, the average loan debt is $35,000. Forty million students have student loan debt. Eight million of that 40 million have defaulted on those loans. And as your experience, Jacob, having those loans can kind of pigeonhole you. You're stuck. It prevents you from doing anything when it comes to changing jobs, getting married, buying a home. It really kind of flatlines you, unfortunately. And so that message is being heard, and there are a number of things that are being done. Obviously, here locally, thank goodness, for our community colleges, we appreciate that. But federally, you're seeing, you know, a push for, most student loans now are about 9% interest rates. I mean, I can, you know, we can get 4% on our houses. And so there is legislation out there to make it so that we reduce, that we're able to refinance and get that lower interest rate, is very important. We want to make, there's legislation, and all these are pieces that I support, there's legislation to make Pell Grants a year-round. Make sure that they have Pell Grants year-round, because now they stop in summer. And so we want to make sure that they're able to go to summer school and do that. I remember, I'll never forget, George Lumetall, UC, a chance that we're meeting with tomorrow, actually. I met with him, I sat next to him at the Copeland Grove. Not even I was a candidate, I remember he told me, look, let me tell you, if you can do anything for education, make sure Pell Grants are year-round. And there actually is legislation to do that. But it's also coming up with ideas like national service in the sense that, you know, if you decide to give back to your community, give back to your country, you should have some of your loans forgiven. I firmly believe that, and there is legislation that's out there that's doing that. Also, it depends on what you want to get into. I just took forward a bill that says that if you want to get into STEM, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, that you can basically have a kind of a, what is it, a $4,000 grant to get through that. But at the same time, there's also legislation that's saying that we're gonna give you a 25% reduction in your loans if you do that, on your federal loans. It's these types of ideas that have to get out there, that are there in Congress, that have to get through Congress and get to the President's desk to be signed. As you know as well as I do, it's about the pay for. How are we gonna pay for it? But I believe that that type of... But I believe that that type of investment, man, it's worth it. It's worth it. But let me just also take this time to thank you for your investment, what you're doing for this community, what you're doing for the community in Salinas, because even though you have the federal government who's not doing anything, thank God there are people like you who are getting on their asses and actually stepping up and getting into our community and helping our youth with what you do at Jacob's Nest. So thank you very much for that.
And then, we call it, I think you call it Jacob's Nest.
That's our digital nest.
But you got it right the first time. One last question, and I'm gonna give it to Margarita, because, what?
I just went crazy.
Oh, have you?
Yeah, but it's okay.
Okay, let's see, we're gonna get creative here, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna go like this, okay? So Margarita, I'm gonna give you, can you share one minute with Ari? So we're gonna give you a minute, and then I'm gonna go to you. There you go. See? We can knock it out. Okay, so, one minute. Thank you for playing along.
I'm gonna say, see, there's a question. Okay, so, and I will share my minute. Mine is, you said, share if you had a not-so-great experience, so I will, while your staff did call me back and they did the best they could, I do appreciate that perhaps it's more telling of that I fell under bureaucratic process. I may have fallen under what's a much bigger situation than they were able to fully resolve. I wanted to bring that to your attention since you said you wanted to hear some not-so-great experiences. I brought the...
They did work with you on this issue, though?
They did, and I brought the supporting and information if it would help with me tonight. With my question, my concern is that I applied for my social security stability benefits, and they were denied, and I filed an appeal, and it was denied, and so I'll keep it short, and that's it. I just wanted to share that. So while I did some file support documentation as requested, it was denied, and then again, I appealed, and that was denied. So I brought that with me, and I'll bring it as an aside afterward.
Thank you, Margarita.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing that up. I'm glad that my staff is able to work with you, that they did work with you. Look, I, unfortunately, it doesn't always work out, especially in this bureaucracy, but know that we, that's why, I'm glad to hear, one, that you brought that up, but that, two, that we actually worked with you in that fight, and that you actually went through two things, not only just that you were denied one, but then we actually helped you, hopefully with the appeal process. And if there's, if there's anything else we can do for you in that process, we will, please know that, okay?
I'll say afterwards to show you, because I was told that I should bring that into your office.
Were you at Santa Cruz office or Salinas?
No, I am online, I filled out the release, and so I was told you reached your office.
Did anybody reach out to you by phone, no?
Yes, I have the information, which I was told I should bring in, but I was not able to get there.
Good, okay. So you haven't set a meeting with the office yet?
No, I can get to your office.
We have mobile office hours, by the way, here in Watsonville. That's one of the things we've implemented, mobile office hours. What I, what I mean by that is that every month, my staff comes here into Watsonville and sets up mobile office hours for people like you who can't make it down to Salinas or Santa Cruz, we're here, we've done, we're doing, we do that in Watsonville, Hollister, and then through the four towns down the Salinas Valley, kind of rotating each month. And so hopefully, that would be one where, well, we're gonna talk to you after, but just to let everybody else know that if you can't get to those offices, we do have mobile office hours here, and our staff comes here to meet you. Thank you for that.
All right. And this will be the last question, I am going to, Jacob, we're already over, but last questions, and then we'll conclude some finally.
Okay, so my name is Ari Parker, I'm a resident of Watsonville, a teacher as well. This has to do with Apollo, I shouldn't put your name in the speaker to. And I'm gonna talk about seniors, but not the kind that graduate now, the kind that we have here in District 7. And it has to do with flood zone issues, and primarily with insurance and flood insurance. You've done so much to help facilitate where we've come with the Army Corps of Engineers. I listened to what you just said, and I'm back to ask for more, and I'm also here to work for that. But the insurance, the flood insurance issues that these seniors are facing in our senior area over here, which is right in the flood zone, are really important, and I know they just, in Congress, they just re-upped the National Flood Insurance Program, and they gave it until November. It's kind of like all these little hopscapes and jumps, but they're not overhauling and making it, you know, happen. What kind of issues, what kind of issues, what kind of help can you give us to redraw our flood zone areas for our seniors in this area, District 7 especially, and in Watsonville, and on the Potrero side, so that, which my mom was a woman over there. You know, the idea is, they need help, and, and so, help.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Thank you for that complex question as the last one.
I kind of knew better, but I kind of did, you're, remember Watsonville.
Glad you're my friend, Erica. Love you. No, look, that is the issue, and that's something that with the flood risk management standards can be very difficult. I actually put forward legislation that made sure that certain developers in new areas, and they're going to develop, President Barack Obama put forward these flood risk management standards, that basically, if you're gonna obtain federal funding to build anything, then you need to abide by these certain standards. And unfortunately, this administration withdrew those regulations, my legislation put forward to make sure that they stay permanent as law. But in regards to redrawing the zones, we have actually looked into this a while back, and I say that because I don't remember exactly what our conclusion was. I'd be more than happy to work with you on this, that we can sit down, I can become better educated about it, and so that we can actually help, not just you, but, and not just your family, but other members who are in there and having difficulty with their insurance rates as well when it comes to this. So we're happy to do that. So thank you, I'm sorry I can't give you more than that, but trust me, be more than happy to work with you on that the best we can.
I'll be glad to ask.
Okay, yeah, no, please do, please do.
Okay, Jimmy, I've got somebody that is telling me, I have one more question, so.
I'll be around that. Yeah, how's that?
It's something that we can talk about.
Is that good?
Go ahead, Jacob.
Jacob, okay.
Go ahead.
Let's do this, Karen, ask your question, and then you're gonna answer the question and do your closing remarks. How's that?
It's not an answer, it's something for the next meeting, but I think it's something that's very, very, very important. California's the largest economy in the world. The one thing that was announced in May, that we're the largest, the fifth-largest economy in the world. Irene Asbenson, the chief economist who did California Department of Finance, said, except for all economic sectors, except for California agriculture, contributed to the California GDP. Yeah, I talked to her. So anyway, this is something I wanted, this is the last thing I wanted you to hear, that I wanted for the next meeting to talk about, it's really happening in California agriculture. We've talked about river, we've talked about housing, we've talked about so many things, but there's some serious problems going on that people aren't aware of, so that's why I wanted to bring it up last.
Thank you.
And so it's, I think it's...
Yeah, no, that's, that's good, and thank you for bringing that up. Obviously, look, I, you know, we are the number-one agriculture state in the nation. So that's, I'm glad you talked to her, and I'm glad you pointed that out to her. It's unfortunate that you needed to do that.
Well, we still did talk to the GDC.
Yeah.
I didn't know that about the Hera-Hara House. I didn't know that.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, no, look, I, I, that's very important, and, you know, I'm fortunate enough that I grew up here, I get it, and people like you and John, you, many people understand how important agriculture is to this community, is to California's community, so thank you for that, and that's why, you know, look, my number-one choice is to be on the Ag Committee, and I'm glad I am, but I can say we're, we're working hard to get that Farm Bill passed, because right now, you know, our farmers, if anything, they need some stability and predictability, because they have not had this with the lack of labor that's now present and has been present in our community and in our country, but also with these tariffs that are out there right now. The $12 billion that mostly is gonna go to Midwest farmers, you know, that's why myself and my colleagues Jim Costa, Jeff Benham, and David Valadeo, and number bipartisan colleagues wrote a letter to Secretary Dugan saying, hey, that $12 billion isn't enough, we don't, we don't want short-term bailouts, we want long-term business. And so we're continuing to push forward on that. But yeah, no, I appreciate that, we'll continue to talk about that. Know that I continue to make it known that, you know, basically agriculture is very, very important in a lot of aspects, and we're gonna continue to try to push hard to get a Farm Bill before the deadline of September 30th. So thank you, thanks to all of you, all the participants, all everybody who asked a question, and you didn't get your question answered, please know I'm here to follow up with you, not just tonight, but subsequent to this evening. Thank you, Erica, for everything you do in the, in the moderation and being here and being a part of not just this community in Watsonville, our community on the Central Coast. And let me just kind of share with you, I got this question yesterday, and it's a question that I was surprised I got yesterday, because I've been getting this ever since I raised my hand back on January 3rd of 2017, and it's basically, what can we do from here to influence or change the direction we are going? Calls, emails, letters don't seem to work, even protests and marches fail to sway our president. And, and, you know, I have struggled to answer that question, because it has come up over and over and over. And the answer that I've come to is what I started off this evening with, and that's basically our participation, our voting. I can't stress that enough. I hope that you know, based on the work that I have been doing, the work that my staff does, that we are here continuing to fight for you, be it the constituent services that I mentioned, or be it back in Washington DC, focusing on issues that are valuable to this area, immigration, infrastructure, education, the environment, housing, those are all issues that we are continuing, that I am continuing to push forward, despite what's going on in this administration, but I'm continuing to push forward in Washington DC. And so have the confidence, knowing that people are working for you, myself and the other colleagues back in Washington, so that, you know, it motivates you, and it motivates others to not just continue to reach out to me, but to speak up to everybody throughout this area and throughout this country, because it's very, very important. I know that at times, I was driving up here, and I was talking to somebody, and he's like, I don't even watch the news anymore, because it's just so, my head's about to explode. And I get that, and it can be very distracting, it can be disturbing, and yeah, I think we know it can be damaging too, what's going on. But we have to call it what it is and keep on moving forward. And that's why I've done my best, I feel, I'll continue to do my best in serving all of you, not just here locally with the services, but your values, representing your values back east. Because I have, what gives me, what makes me optimistic, and people have said that about me, of course, I have to be in this job, okay? But second of all, is I look back on the history of this country, and I see everything that we've been through, and we've always got through it, but the reason we've been able to get through it is because we've been engaged, we've participated, and the people have participated, and that's very, very important. That's what gives me hope, seeing all of you here tonight, because I know that this will give you motivation to continue, not just you to participate, but other people to participate. I heard this story once about Muhammad Ali, and he was walking on the street, and somebody comes up to me and says, comes up to him and says, hey, champ, champ, I saw your fight last night. Muhammad Ali said, oh, that's great, that's great, and the champ, and he said, yeah, you know, I couldn't believe you got knocked down. Muhammad Ali said, you didn't see me. Yeah, yeah, no, the kid says, yeah, no, I saw him, you got, they got that surprise hook, and that knocked you down. Muhammad Ali's response was, kid, I ain't never been knocked down. I'm either up from getting up. And that's how I feel about this country. That's how I feel about this democracy, especially after tonight, because I know that you have based on our faith in our system, because we are up, and we need to continue standing up. And that's what this participation is about. That's why I'm doing this tonight, yeah, last night and tomorrow night, because I believe that it's, we need to show people that we are up, and we'll continue to stand up for what we believe in, and I'm here to help you do that. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.